Everyone for coming, if you're not able to hear, see there's another hearing this door that you're looking at, Dan, I'm sorry if there's not enough seats. I'd like to welcome everyone to the city council meeting and ask that you all stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance. If you'll stay standing right after the pledge of allegiance, we'll have our invitation led by Councilman Mike Thompson. I do some kind of our councilman doing it.
(inaudible) (inaudible)
Please bow as we pray. Holy God, we humbly ask for your presence with us and your blessing upon us tonight as we, as we address the well-being of our city. Guide us in our actions and decisions. Tonight, I especially thank you for our teachers, our administrators, and the staff that work in all of our schools. They have the privilege and the responsibility of caring for, mentoring, and teaching our children, our teenagers, who are our future. Bless each of them, give them strength, give them wisdom, and give them courage as they give themselves to our sons and our daughters. Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Thank you very much. One of the high honors of being mayor is the opportunity to recognize those that have done great deeds, and we have a proclamation this evening that I'd like to read. If I could have Judy Shelton come forward and her accomplish.
(laughing) She has a drink tonight. Oh, but you're drinking.
(inaudible)
I threatened to bring a water bottle.
We have a chair to justine with Bonner Springs Parks and Recreation that supports, helps support Judy and all of her accomplishments from all the work that they do also, and I appreciate them being here to support them also. There we go. That's why I was on a speaker right about it, didn't I, my glass? Whereas volunteering an individual's time and resources is an essential part of the Bonner Springs community spirit, and whereas Bonner Springs' greatest natural, natural resource is its people, and whereas Judy Shelton is the Kansas Recreation and Parks Association Distinguished Volunteer for 2017, and whereas Mrs. Shelton fills the need she sees through voluntary actions such as serving on the tourism committee and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, establishing pickleball at the community center, which attracts approximately 40 players per week to our facility, planting a majority of the city's flowerpots and beds in 2013, launching the Garden Girls in 2014 by inspiring friends Betty Coleman and Judy Anderson, Dorothy Hurley and Chris Bush, to volunteer to plant and maintain nearly a thousand flowers annually in 33 flowerpots and 13 beds throughout the city. Whereas the Garden Girls volunteer approximately 448 hours, saving the city approximately $7,616 a year in labor, and whereas with Judy at the helm, the Parks Flower Beautification Program has bloomed for the entire community to enjoy the attractive flowers planted to beautify our city. And whereas Judy is a dedicated, self-sacrificing Bonner Springs resident and an icon for volunteerism. Now therefore I, Jeff Harrington, Mayor of Bonner Springs, Kansas, do hereby declare February 12, 2018, as Judy Shelton Day to honor Mrs.
Yay![224.12][224.12](applause)
To honor and thank Mrs. Shelton for sharing her time, energy, knowledge, and abilities. Further, I call upon all citizens to help renew and sustain community spirit by committing themselves to address the needs of our community through voluntary action. Congratulations.[266.33][266.33](applause) Oh, lots of pictures. And we also.
More pictures.
Thank you very much.
(inaudible) be chaired with Judy Anderson and Betty Coleman.
Well, you're all helping to beautify Bonner Springs, and we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Just don't forget your name.
Moving right along to item number two, which is citizens' concerns about items not on today's agenda. This is an opportunity for those citizens here to address the mayor and city council on the record in the open public meeting. No immediate action will be taken on these issues in the interest of fair and transparent city government. All issues will be investigated, researched, or addressed as necessary, and with the consensus of the city council placed on the future agenda. Since we have a full council chambers, those of you that would like to have an opportunity to address the city council are welcome to. If you'll step to the podium, state your name and address and your comments. I appreciate it if you keep them short to two or three minutes. And then if you happen to also agree with someone's comments, when you step forward, please just state your name and address and say that I also agree with so-and-so, or you don't have to restate the entire comments, I would not think. So those of you who'd like an opportunity, please.
My name is Angie Thomas. I live at 429 Park Drive in Bonner Springs my entire life. First of all, thank you to the men and women who serve on the city council. I know you guys are all volunteers, and I do appreciate your time and the consideration that you guys give to these matters. I am here tonight to respectfully request another public forum discussing the use of the 1918 building. This is a huge decision that's going to impact our entire community. I have an online petition with over 800 signatures. I have handwritten signatures of over 2,000, respectfully requesting just a chance to be heard when we're going to have something that's going to impact our community this greatly, just not a business that gets back to our community in so many ways, but such a large financial impact on our community, I think we should have as many forms as we need to to make sure all points or viewpoints are being heard. So that is my request to the city council tonight. Thank you. Should I give these to you?
You can bring them here. I'll take them.
Mayor Harrington?
Thank you. Please.
Hi, Wendy Scheich, 194 Cornell, Bonner Springs. Thank you for allowing Citizens' Concerns Council, and from attending the previous workshops and meetings, I want to thank you for working toward providing a government services facility. You have a golden opportunity to elevate our community to another level. Your strategic planning is vital. I want to let you know that my husband and I both served eight terms, eight years on the city council, so we know the position that you're in, representing Ward 1. I know that all the departments, even when I was on city council, are in need of a cohesive location to continue to provide for our community. They're out of space. Sometimes this space is non-existent or grossly inadequate, and I know that departments have been operating like this for a while. The current city hall is in decline. It has been. There's no room for growth. The roof is leaking, and we know that waters is being, documents are being stained and ruined that are stored here, and as the citizens come in the city hall, I think they recognize that something needs to happen. Reasons to utilize the 1918 building, I wanted to bring that up because I'm just going to reiterate that the city owns the building and the land. The infrastructure is in place. Municipal parking is in place. The building's environmentally green. Natural light is abundant, and it stood the test of time structurally. Reuse and renovation represents a lower price per square foot, which includes additional room for the departments to grow than new construction. Previous councils took steps to install new roofs on the building for future city use. I'm very familiar with tax credits. They're available and extremely an important tool, including the design portion, which you may be considering at the next meeting. Those tax credits are available for that. There were many factors when the building was put on the National Register. I didn't do that personally. I participated. You might know that it's a landmark. Soldiers returning from World War I were given jobs there to build it. It was a prominent Kansas City architect that designed and oversaw the construction. It's structurally sound and offers the city a lot more space for community growth. That's why it was slated for future city use, and many local people were sentimental and wanted it to remain in the community. But for me, my intent in helping with that National Register nomination was the strongest, most well-built building in our city. It has a presence of community identity and represents our heritage. In today's world, I think it's really important that we're not just a disposable society. So combining new construction with the renovation of that building where it sits in our block that we own is important. I do understand raising prices. Keith and I own seven properties in Bonner. We own them because we like to keep our neighborhood up. I understand the $5 that's going to be added to my utility bill, but I think all of those are fiscally responsible ways to move this project forward. And the main thing I see as we, the community's improved greatly by this Integrated Government Service Center, it allows the departments to function more effectively and efficiently, that you're taking a step to combine new construction and historic preservation, which I think is excellent. It will draw more quality developers and citizens who will invest in Bonner and see the value in and the vision of the community. So I'm looking at that growth, bringing those people in because of the project that you're I understand there's a major project that's looking at the 300 block downtown. That's fantastic. And I want you to know that I wouldn't support a project that's not fiscally responsible, that's not going to make our community a lot better. It's going to elevate it to a new level. It'll give city staff the room and the tools they need and make a huge positive statement on our community for our vision. I think it's a critical time to come together, to move forward consistently in the design phase through construction, and I stated earlier, you have a golden opportunity to elevate this community to a whole new level. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy Slankert, 1138 South 138th Street, Bonner Springs, Kansas, lifetime member of Bonner Springs. And I just have to say that I would follow along with what Cheryl is stating. Everything that she has said is so true. And I think that for myself personally, every time I come to this building to either pay a bill or come into the council chamber here, I have to say this isn't the best representation of what we offer here in Bonner. The building has been around for a long time. I know not everybody appreciates history. Personally for myself, I do, and I just think that it would be so much better for all of us coming down to a building that we can have pride in rather than making excuses, and I'm glad it's not raining today.
Thank you.
(inaudible) 403 Alcath Avenue, three-year member of the community. I'm not real good at this. Everybody else pretty much said it. My concern with going forward with this, the design phase, I think should be done as one process. I don't think that it should be broke up and we design the police station and then design the, you know, what we're going to do with the city hall and everything else. I think it should be one shot, get it all right, so it all looks uniform. I don't want to look at a building that went, I don't know what they were trying to accomplish, you know? So I think that that building deserves, you know, a unique, one step. You can phase it in as you go as we have the money. That way, I like the fact that how cheap per square footage we're able to do this, and the fact that you can phase it. I think that's crucial, hopefully, to not go in debt with taxpayers' money to accomplish something that I believe would draw not only economic growth to the private sector, but the building is unique. It's sitting right over the, you know, the city. It looks right over downtown. If, if the private sector sees that the city is willing to invest in their town, I believe that it'll bring economic growth to a much-needed revitalized downtown. So that's my main concern, is that we need to one-shot this in the, in the design program instead of phasing it, because I'm, I'm just concerned that the beauty of that building deserves to be preserved and a unique cohesive design is in play there. I really, really hope that we go forward with this. I think it, I think it is, it truly is a golden opportunity. I believe that Bonner Springs is on the verge of a little bit of spur to growth, and I think if people recognize that the city is vested, that everything else will fall right into play. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say that I agree totally with what has been so gloriously stated. It was wonderful.
Name and address, please.
Oh, Chris Wood. 12 Lake Forest, Bonner Springs, Kansas.
Thank you.
Floyd Massmer, 337 Cheyney, the city. Wendy spoke for me. Anytime the city undertakes proposal of new buildings, how city government, there's always yays and nays. I received this handbill last Friday. I was down at Jams eating breakfast. I have no opposition to those who oppose what's going on as long as they're truthful. This is a depiction of, the picture that surrounds the city. One circle crossed out, which means I don't like it. What I don't like about this is it says there are no new businesses in town. There are no new housing in town. That's not true. Not true. Rootprints. Mr. Piner is proposing 116 new houses. They're being built all over the town. There are two upon all caught just north of Moore's. Bad deal. Thanks, Wendy.
Greg Jevower, 138 South Nettleton. I agree with the previous speakers wholeheartedly. I also know that quite a bit of money has gone into the 1918 building since 2002. I believe about $250,000, including $55,000 in roof repairs. So, I mean, yeah, anyway. We also, with the bonds, the origination fees that have been talked about, where the bonds from the Riverwalk could be rolled over and save some money there, and then also if the project goes forward or a decision is made on whatever project, we can move forward at a much cheaper interest rate than what we've been doing, and especially if you phase the things and split them apart. So in terms of an actual financial sense, some decision needs to be made, and it needs to be made soon, because this thing's been going on for quite a while now. So whatever way we go, hopefully something soon, and then you can get the police out of the fire department, get the fire department actually operating as the fire department should, and the police station at some point in the future, and then the council and municipal court in a place that actually function properly. And that's really all I have to say.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kelly Yer. I live at 120 Kendrick here in Bonner, and I am supporting Angie Thomas. Almost said her maiden name. The old building that sits here in the middle of town, it holds a lot, well, I can't say it holds a lot of memories being in it. I just miss being able to go to it. The year I was supposed to enter as in junior high school was when they built the new year. So I missed out, and it holds a lot of memories to a lot of people here, and I'm just open up for a more newer, better efficient building on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Amy Lopez, and I live at 226 North Nettleton Avenue, and I just wanted to say that I support Angie Thomas's comments and that we probably need some more public forums so everybody's viewpoint is taken into place that lives in Bonner Springs. Thank you.
Brenna Hope, 413 Arthur, Bonner Springs, Kansas. As some of you know, I've seen some of your faces in the haunted house. I'm the registered nurse at the front door. I will tell you, those 2,000 signatures were all taking place at the haunted house just from that, for the petition. That shows you how many people we can bring into the city. We've given Back to the City $2.50 off of every ticket. I believe this last year it was $17,000, around that amount. I think if we do the new city hall there, I think we're losing a valuable business. We're not just another business that can take down their products and put it on another shelf. It would be very hard for us to rebuild. That being said, we started out as a very, very small haunted house, and we've grown to have lines all the way down from the building, the 1918 building, past the post office. If you drive by on a night in October, you can see that not only is that bringing businesses around profit, I know some of people go to Kobe's or they use our gas stations or, you know, that's bringing a lot of people in from out of town. I've personally talked to everybody that's coming through that door, and we have had people travel that were in town the year before from Iowa, Nebraska. I mean, they're using our hotels. I think we're losing a valuable asset to our city, and not only do we have those people visiting, but it's also allowing employment for an extra job, for something to do. We do like to do community stuff, be involved. Another big thing is that I love that building, as I'm sure all of you do. I've spent, this is our eighth year, I've spent eight years of my life. Now, I didn't go there during high school or middle school or whatever, but I've spent a lot of time, as some of my fellow coworkers have, and I think it's going to be a real shame if we gut that inside of the building, say for one day we don't want to use it anymore, you can tear our walls down and it's still the school. And I think if we lose that school, we're going to lose a very important part of the history, so I ask that, you know, we just take that into thoughts as well. And I, I think that there are probably other options out there for a new city hall. I think the police department and the new city hall need to happen. I would just ask that it is in a different location. Thank you.
My name is Carrie Cole. I'm not from Bonner Springs. I am from Leavenworth, Kansas. I have lived in Kansas for about 10 years now, and I'm going to tell you something. I didn't know anything about Bonner Springs until I heard about Third Street Asylum. I'm going to tell you what Third Street Asylum does for me and my husband, and I'm sure the rest of my coworkers. I grew up in a small town, and I wasn't accepted very well. I walk into this building, and these people have done nothing but treat me like family. They give me and my husband a place to belong, just like they give a lot of us a place to belong. You know, it's not easy for people to admit that they don't mesh well with our community, you know? So standing here and saying that in front of a whole entire city's worth of people is a blow to my ego. I just want to let you know that that house means a lot to me, and it means a lot to us. And I don't think any of us would, would see it any other way, you know? I don't, I couldn't imagine it being in another building. I feel like I'm, I'm part of that building when I'm in there, like the energy that we all have, and, and, and even though it's unconventional and it's scary and crazy, ooh, it's a crazy idea, and we scare the children, well, yeah, that's the purpose of it, you know? But it's all in fun and games, and we've, you know, never intentionally hurt anybody, you know? And, and I know it's, it's a crazy thought, but I just really would like you guys to consider putting it in another location, you know, just for the sheer fact that it means a lot to all of us, and we've put a lot of hard work and a lot of heart into that house and, and to the community. I mean, we, we see little children come through, and they're terrified, and I don't have any problem dropping my character and saying, hey, I'm a mommy too. It's okay, here, touch my face, it's real, it's all fun and games. And, and we get a good response out of that, you know? We've had people pass out in our rooms, and we've, we jump to it. We get them, we get them out of there, and we take care of them officially, get them some water, get them, get them to the, you know, the EMS, and, and we take care of them. So if that's not taking care of the community, I don't know what is. So thank you for taking my words into consideration.
Thank you.
My name's Nathan Cole. I live in Leavenworth. I was born and raised in Kansas City. I'm 33 years old. My whole time of living in the area, I've known about Bonner. I've never known about downtown Bonner. You know, I've known about, you know, Sandstone, you know, but that's about it. The first time I've actually came into downtown Bonner was three years ago, where I learned about Third Street Asylum. I came in, yeah, I'm a, I'm a worker. I love it. It helps myself. People throughout a year for us workers, some of us, stuff gets to us throughout the whole year, you know? And for the hunt, it's a time that we can release, and it calms us, it helps us internally to, it just makes you feel better, really, you know? It's letting some aggression out, which you are, but you're not hurting anybody, you know? It's just like any other, like, theater show, you know? That's all it is, really. It's, it's a show. We, we put our hearts into it, as my wife would say. But as I was saying, from living in the area and just coming in here, I would have never known about Kobe's. I actually worked for Kobe's, and one of the things that I liked most about Kobe's is I'd go out for my break, and I'd see that building, and most of us workers, we don't see it as a business. We don't see it as a job. We see it as our home. That's our home, you know? Every time I drive by, I have four children, and we drive by, and the kids even point out, and they go, mommy, daddy, that's your house. And it's like, yeah, you know, and I couldn't see it any other way, you know, as I speak. You know, it's hard for me to speak, I'm holding back tears. It's just a scary thing to think that something that means so much, so many people, can just go away. Along with the city hall and everything, yes, every town needs a good city hall to represent their town and everything like that. But I feel like there's plenty of space around. There's other buildings. For the amount of money that I've, I've heard that, that is planning to go into it, I think you could have a nice, modern, state-of-the-art facility for your city hall and make it exactly what the city wants. A blank canvas, you could do whatever you want. Yes, we have that, but if you change a lot of it, that takes a lot of history away from the building. It is a beautiful building. It is. And with, even if you did take it as city hall, my fears would be the changing of the look of the building itself. It would take away the history, the look of the building, which makes the town have its look of what it is. And I guess that's all I really have to say. Thank you for listening. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Connie Steele, 234 Shidley. I too have sat in the same seat you all sat in for a number of years, and I know there are tough decisions for you to make in which direction to go, but I stand with Wendy and the other people on using the historical building as a future city hall, combined with the new police station. I think it will give the whole block a great ambiance for the city, for people coming in and visitors. So I would just ask that you make the best decision you can, and hopefully you'll see that the hard work staff's already put in on the future design is the right way to go. Thank you.
Argentina Angel, 720 Shidley Avenue. I'm sort of still this, so I'm sort of cheating. So I just kind of sort of glanced through this really quickly, and I've heard a lot of, I've read a lot of your reports that you put in so much time, Wendy, about when the Sayar Skyline was started, and that's how the Historic Preservation Society got started, excuse me. And from everything that I'm seeing, and I've heard, the building was built with a lot of quality, and it is a structurally sound building that has moved very little either way. And just living in the short time, I've lived in my house, and it, not to say that it wasn't built, I'm shifting a lot. And for as long as this building has been there, and what I'm seeing is the building's roof has been replaced twice in 100 years, that's pretty impressive. And I don't know how long the city hall has been here or the police department, but they're not really usable anymore now. And I'm not saying it was built badly by any means, but if those buildings aren't usable and the 1918 building, for as little work has been put into it and as little as money, I'm thinking maybe 100 years from now, that building's still going to be standing, and a lot less money's going to have to be going into it, renovating it and keeping up with it, and that's because it's been really neglected for a long time. I'm pretty sure little leaks here and there, you guys are going to point those out and see those, and they're going to be patched up. So I think in the long run, it's going to save our community, our, you know, our tax dollars less money, keeping up with that building as well as it's been built. So, and as everybody else has said, I mean, it's a beautiful building, it shows history, it shows character and integrity. Things just weren't built as well now as they were back then, and I think that's just a great representation of our town, and I think that's what we really want to show other people when they come to visit, that we respect history, we respect what brings us together. I mean, at least me personally, to go and look for people to get donations to find out, you know, sorry, just reading through this really quickly, to put it on the Historic National Registry and all that, I mean, that shows love and dedication. So, sorry, I just kind of rambling now, but I support 100% us using that for a city hall and police department. I think that's just a really great move for our community. Thank you.
This has been real orderly. Anyone else like an opportunity to step forward?
My name's Paul Bush, 15418 150th Street, Bonner Springs. Many of you know in our room, I worked for KCB Bank. Our bank was the victim of a robbery, January the 22nd, unfortunate incident, ended the best possible way for us in that no one was hurt. Robber left the facility on foot and was apprehended a short time later. And I want, the purpose for me coming here tonight, to speak to the council, is just to go on record, Bonner Springs Police Department did an outstanding job in their response to our calls. They were compassionate, professional, they did a nice job. Couldn't say more about their efforts that day. That individual was apprehended in less than 12 hours afterwards, and again, no one was hurt in our facility, no police officers were hurt, and we've got a, you know, a bad guy behind bars. So, anyway, a lot of times you hear negative comments and so forth, and the purpose for my visit here tonight is to let you know, our police department did an outstanding job, and I want to thank them personally, so, thank you.
Not everybody spoke. Anyone else like an opportunity to step up and add anything new?
Cheryl Seaton, 411 West Morse Avenue. Mother of 12. We've spent a lot of money at the haunted house. I have three, between three and four kids who have worked and continue to work for it. I've spread the word, and people I know from all over come in for it and get to experience Bonner Springs for the first time. I can't say that I'm going to be able to spread the word if we turn it into the city hall or police department and have people come and look at that, but I just think that it's a great business, and it has brought in a lot of money, a lot of enjoyment, and I hate to see it be kicked out of the building for the police department city hall. I absolutely believe we obviously need a new city hall and police department, I just don't think it should be there.
I'm Amy Walters, I live at 13776 Valley Way in Bonner Springs. I grew up in Bonner Springs, and like several other members, I have been a city council member back in the 80s. I was on the council when the building was given to the city, and we had our task with trying to figure out whether to tear it down or what to do with it. And at that time, in the late 80s, we decided to, we called it mothballed, preserve it, use what we could for the community center and the library at the time. And it's, the thinking that we had back then was, it's a wonderful part of our history, it's too good to let go, but the time was not right at that time to do anything with it, and we knew that the time would be right eventually, and I think this is the time to use that building for the city. Thank you.
Short please. 403 Alcatraz. I understand the situation with the purpose the building has been being used for now, and I'm hoping maybe, you know, the economics of this is, the other way is so astronomically The money that would have to be raised to create an entire new facility is, I mean, to me, I don't, you know, without going into massive debt, I don't see how that's going to be possible. We're raising our taxes to the point where we're selling homes and leaving, you know? So, hopefully, there's a way, as a community, that we can come together, figure out a situation, because I understand the haunted house and the meaning behind it, and hopefully there's a way that possibly all of us can figure out a solution to that, to that business that is using the building, I think, 30 days out of the year, instead of 365 days out of the year, which we're proposing. But they, I understand their voice, for sure, on that, and, you know, maybe there is a solution that we can come together and figure out to preserve that business. I know if we do, I'm not much into being scared, so, but I'd probably buy a ticket and then just not go in.
Anyone who hasn't had an opportunity to speak, please.
Okay, my name's Rita Hope. I live at 413 Arthur. I've lived in this town my whole life. I went to school in that building in junior high. My sister who just passed away, Connie Vickers, this last year, went to high school in that building. I also love the building for different reasons than some of my coworkers. I have a lot of memories from that building. And using the building for the police department city hall is okay in one aspect, but when you gut the whole inside of the building out, and all you have is the outside walls, and you're only going to use the bottom two floors, to me, that does it a disservice. I would also like to support Angie. I think we need to have another open forum, because I've talked to so many people that don't have any idea what's going on, and they feel like this has been shoved under the rug quickly, they didn't know about the main forum meeting. I just think it needs to be opened up. I would also like to know if your budget of 13 or 14 million is still sitting at that or if it has gone up. I would like to know for sure that the building is structurally sound, the foundation of it. There are many things I would like to know if you're going to raise our taxes and how much. There's many things I think that need to be brought up before we jump into doing this, one way or the other. So I support Angie, and think we need another open forum, and I think the whole public Bonner needs to know, instead of just a few, select few. Thank you.
Anyone else like to stand and speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda this evening. Consent agenda this evening includes the minutes from the January 22nd, 2018 city council meeting, claims for city operations, public housing authority claims, public use requests for second wind foundation five key, K, and appointments to the boards and commissions. Anything to be told by the staff, by citizens? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to accept consent agenda as written.
I'll second.
Proven second. Questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none, vote please.
Reese?
Yes.
Early?
Yes.
Kenneth?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Just for informational purposes, you're all welcome to stay. Some of the city council meetings, some people may not think they're real exciting. We have about seven or eight different issues that we'll be working our way through tonight. Then after the city council meeting, we'll have a workshop. The workshop is an opportunity for education, or educational opportunity for the council from the city staff. There won't be a public forum associated with the workshop. You're welcome to stay and listen to that. It's your choice, your pleasure. As some of these seats have vacated, if those in the back would like to have a seat, you're more than welcome, but we'll just, just for informational purposes, and we'll just continue making our way through the agenda. Agenda item number eight is final plat, PT 18101 for the Bonner Springs Junior and Senior High. Staff?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor. Donald Flot, City Planner. The final plat for you tonight is to accept the dedication of easements and rights of way. This project is one of the four projects that went to the planning commission last month. This is, this is a partial replat, a plat of both the junior high school and the high school, being the name junior, senior high. One of the questions was...
Were seats up here?
Was with regard to middle school, and the issue came up with naming of this was the plat name is junior high. It'll probably change back. So anyway, it does come to unanimously approved tonight, subject to the 16 listed conditions. David Wood with Cobb Alley Engineering is here as the applicant along with that damn little, uh, student school. Kevin, questions?
Very good, thank you. Does the school have anything to add? Good to know how you feel. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept the dedication of easements and rights of way as shown on the final plat.
Second.
Proven in second. Questions, concerns, comments? We'll start down here.
Were the sidewalks added to it? I know that there was a comment on one of the things that I was reading, that there was mention the sidewalks hadn't been added to it yet, or the easements.
It's actually easement, they will be on the final plat before we sign it, yes, and they actually have been.
Oh, okay.
And it's working with school district. The school district got a grant for it, because we're redoing the design, 130 East Street, we had to locate those easements inside what the building is.
Okay, no further questions?
None.
None.
Seeing none, vote please.
Early?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hip?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Ooh, you have to vote?
Got to. Awesome.
Congratulations. We're glad that this is moving forward, and we appreciate the working, team spirit working together to get those sidewalks around. Thank you. Were seats are opening up? Onto item number nine, farmer's market storage on city property. Staff?
We have a request from the Bonner Springs Farmer's Market for permission to place a storage shed for their items for the farmer's market on city property, right off the parking lot over by Kelly Murphy. It would, there's a map included, it proposed shed is about 10 miles long shed, and maybe bring enough people from the central front.
All right, very good. Anything else to add?
A positive vote would be great.
Seems to be the thing.
Don't hide how you feel. Anything else from the citizens concerning this issue?
I would like to say that I support it fully to get some of that stuff off of my property.
Moving along, thank you very much. I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to allow the Bonner Springs Farmer Market to place a storage shed on city property, subject to planning commission approval.
Second. Proven second. Any concerns, comments, questions from this end?
Is that the actual color?
Yellow.
This is painful. I'd say this, because staff didn't want to, I know it's been a hardship last summer for Travis, having to constantly haul all the equipment out there he needs, and this will save a lot of time and effort on him.
That's hard.
Thank you for your effort.
If you don't do it, he's going to be asking to borrow my garage.
Will you put it on a slab, or what would the base be?
It will be, it will be up on concrete with nothing underneath it, so water can flow under it.
Up here, on a block here? Thank you.
None. Blocks.
Yes. No windows, there'll be skylines.
There were bars, yeah. Okay, but I didn't mean to be facetious, but locks, in other words, is it going to be keyed, in other words, in, well, and stuff like that, very inaccessible and stuff? Yeah, good.
Very good, thank you. Other questions, concerns? Vote please.
Thompson?
Yes.
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Hip?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Very good, congratulations.
Next question is, how soon will it be built?
I thought everybody was here for something else. It pains me to announce the next item on our agenda, but item number 10 is the consideration of council member resignation. And since we don't have any staff input that we have on this item, this is the formal resignation acceptance by the city council for long-term Joe Peterson, who has unfortunately submitted his resignation due to personal concerns and business concerns, so I would entertain a motion. So I would entertain a motion.
You're not getting out of here.
I will make. Joe Peterson, effective after adjournment of both February twelfth, two thousand and eighteen City Council meeting and workshop.
Can you do that?
He's the city councilman. He can do whatever he wants.
Should we draw straws for him?
I hate to, but I will second the question.
Best friend. There's a motion and a second. Any questions, concerns, comments?
Don't go.
I will, I'm gonna miss Joe dearly. He was a great addition to the council. Always took time to really understand issues and always, I always felt like his decisions were always done in what he felt was in the best interest of the community. He will be missed.
I echo that. That was very well said. I'll also have to find somebody else to ride in the parade with, which will be difficult. But no, thank you for your service. That's commendable.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe. Joe would always be one that I'd listen to when, when issues would come up, I'd listen to what he was saying and others. But I mean, Joe was, I listened to that. You have a heart for the community and we thank you for that.
Brand new, we've had one pissing match, but I appreciate it. He was very, very diligent and actually helped sway my opinion on an issue, so I do appreciate it.
Joe, we tried very hard unbeknownst to you that we were gonna extend a bike path. It was Ward Four Bike Path all the way to your front door, but Casey Kay wouldn't go for it. So anyway, the best way I'm gonna do is, love you, man. I'm gonna miss you.
I would just like to say, I'm humbled by the kind remarks and I, I don't like to go, but business issues and, and other issues have, have come my way. And I really would like to thank the staff and I'd like to thank the police and I'd like to thank all the people that work at Bonner, all the council members and the mayor that have helped guide me through a lot of the learning experiences. Quite a, a challenge when you, when you sit on the side of it and you have to consider many issues. But most important, I'd like to thank that I have been a small part of moving Bonner forward and making life better for all that come here, that live here and that work here. And I hope that the quality of life continues to grow even when I'm not here, but I will never be far. And, but anyway, thank you very much for all of your kind words and thank you for my time on the council.
Thank you very much. You can't leave until the meeting's over. First, we're gonna vote on this motion. Go ahead and ask for a vote.
Peterson?
Yes.
Early?
Yes.
Reeve?
No.
Now be careful with this guy. I gotta be real careful here. Abstain, how's that?
Kenneth?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Stevens?
Regretfully, yes.
Skip?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes, I'll miss the counters.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And if you wouldn't mind standing, I do have a plaque. Just, we anticipated this and we need another photo op. But our plaque reads, Joe Peterson, City Council, Ward Four, April 2013 to February 2018. In recognition and appreciation, the mayor and city council and city staff, thank you for your service to the city of Bonner Springs. Your devotion of time, energy and skills has resulted in decisions and policy that have helped to improve the community. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
And since it was skillfully worded, you still have to sit down and we have to continue. Onto our next agenda item, which is the appointment of a council member to vacant Ward Four position.
I nominate Joe.
We did have a good working relationship. After you're out of order. After Joe notified me that he was going to resign, we went, the process for selecting a new council person in Bonner Springs has been, the precedent has been set many years ago and for the last, many times that a council seat has been vacant, we've asked for volunteer applicants to make a application for the position with this volunteer, volunteering essentially in Bonner Springs. And then we've taken those applicants to a board of past mayors to review, and they made a suggestion and brought that suggestion forward to me, and I bring that here to the City Council for your confirmation. So I'd like to make a motion to appoint Chris Wood to the vacant council member Ward Four position with a term ending January tenth, twenty-two. She was selected. I confirmed and would like to bring that to the council for your acceptance. And so I would entertain a motion to that effect.
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to appoint Chris Wood to the vacant council member Ward Four position with a term ending January tenth, twenty-two.
Second. Moving in second. I don't, Chris Wood is here this evening. I don't really know that you wanna have an opportunity to make comments.
I am very proud to be a member of the council. Thank you, just sitting here, me, focus.
And you know, new council members bring the cookies. Oh, now wait. That's undue influence. We gotta wait. Thank you, Chris. It's been made, made and seconded. No other questions, concerns, comments? Vote please.
Skip?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Reeve?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Early?
Yes.
Kenneth?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Bye. And as per plan or the order of events, you'll be able to be sworn in at the next City Council meeting, which is the twenty-sixth of February. And I look forward to that. And you're all welcome back to, to welcome her then. Moving on to item number twelve, our city manager's report.
Just one additional item beyond the report is to announce and congratulate Jen Andrews. Jen, yeah, selected and had accepted the position of Deputy Director for Bonner Springs. So she worked in the interim director for the last few months as we transitioned to get her up to speed. I also wanna thank Rita for her service in stepping up the plate in this interim role and look forward to working with Jen and all the members of the government to making the city a great place to live, work and visit. Beyond that, that concludes number four.
Thank you very much. We'll move right into City Council items and we'll start down here.
I have two items that I'd like to bring up and just bring attention to.
About three weeks ago, I don't know how many people know Doris Elliott. She died about three weeks ago. And she was a vital part of this community. And there is an article in the Tibbo Talk about her. And to quote this, a lot of people that do know Doris, it says Doris was passionate and sometimes volatile. Now, most people know that part about her. I owe Doris a lot. And next Saturday, there's going to be a visitation from eleven to one at the Church of Christ, but that's all. I can't let her slip away like this. Please go out and get a copy of the Tibbo Talk and learn who Doris Elliott was. I think it'll surprise you. You talk about an influence in the community, race relations, gender relations, all of that is what she worked towards and the library. And her family was instrumental in bringing the library to Bonner. Please learn the other side. The other side of Doris. Don't let her slip away like this. Learn about her. And she can set a, a good example for us. Then the second thing I'd like to bring up is, you know, I've talked to a lot of people over issues and things all these past several weeks, and one of the things that always comes up is, I sure wish we had a paper. They're trying to start one. So please support the Tibbo Talk. They're doing a good job. Good subscription to it. There's good information coming through and it's all about information and we need the facts. So I wanna put two cents in for Doris in the newspaper. Thank you, Travis. That's all I have.
Thank you. I think I said everything five minutes ago.
Just one thing for me. The city band equipment trailers are stored down at Public Works. At one point, I don't remember which one, it was the big trailer or the little trailer, but one of them was always put undercover to protect it throughout the winter. The little one. Thank you, Skip. It's not currently. I don't know if something's changed in terms of storage or...
I'll check on that.
Thank you.
Jared just walked out.
Thank you. That's all for me.
All right, I had Parks and Rec board meeting last week. Still wanna ask the city for North Park bathrooms. Please keep that on high on the agenda. I have to carry my toddler all the way across that field again. A little self-serving, I get. Bragging on Parks and Rec, they had a great mother-son dance. Hundred and thirty-four people showed up. That's a new record, right, Justine? Father-daughter dance, fifty-four people, another new record. So we love the, the trend and direction. Also, the senior sitter made twenty blankets for veterans. I thought that was an outstanding gesture. And also I found out, which I didn't know, that the Wizard of Oz is coming to Sandstone slash this fall. So that's gonna be a pretty fascinating production, I think.
Right action, like a theater?
Like a theater, first type of...
Providence Medical Center.
Providence Medical Center, sorry. I call retro sometimes. Serving formerly as Sandstone, formerly known as...
There'll always be Sandstone.
We wanna pay tribute to our, our people that support us. That's it. That's all I have.
One more additional, Mayor. Yeah, thank everyone for all their comments this evening. It encouraged me to know that this many people that are actually interested in what the city's doing and, and have an opinion about that. So thank you one and all for that. Doris Elliott Watson's obisher is also in the Kansas City Paper, is quite extensive there. If you can't see it there, it's in the Kansas City Paper. You can probably look that up online also. I've seen several signs around town, you know, traffic signs that need some attention. A few of them upside down. One of them in particular was the Chevron alignment sign on one hundred and thirty-four Street as you come down that hill. It's actually facing the wrong way, and so I'd hate for people to run off the road to the right there because that sign's facing the wrong way. Somebody's taken the top screw out and let it spin down.
Anything else?
That's it.
All right, thank you. Moving right into the mayor's report. I appreciate those comments all of you brought. That's great to know we have that level of passion and commitment in our community. So thank you very much. Another one of the signs that's been partially run over is on one hundred and thirty-second or Shidley, where it turns into Shite, I think, right by the Pentecostal Church. It's been partially...
There's one on the hill in Deerfield, too.
Yep. And so, yeah, with the slick roads, I'm sure that's taken a toll, but I appreciate that and how well the city gets to those. They had an opportunity this last week to meet with the Wyandotte and Johnson County Council mayors, and there are several other communities that are going through having to broach a subject with public administration buildings. So there's a, quite a wide field of knowledge out there concerning public buildings. So I got a lot of good information for the city to consider at those meetings. I really want everyone to know how much I appreciate the level of comfort you have coming and speaking to the City Council. And I recognize for every one person that has the courage to stand up and speak, maybe more than once even, that, that there's many more, there's many more that have just the same feelings and the, the passion behind it. This is a process, on, on the topic of the nineteen-eighteen building, this is a process that has started many years ago. And I know it's passionate to both sides, and this is not a consideration that any of the City Council is taking lightly. I think this is an opportunity for all of us to help Bonner benefit as best as it can. So I, I really appreciate all the input that we've had. And hopefully, we'll challenge all of you on both sides of this issue to stay involved with city government, take up a volunteer position, serve your community in some capacity. The, the one thing Bonner Springs is known for also is our volunteerism, and we're second to none in that. So I appreciate all that you're doing and hope you all will continue. Other than that, unless we have anything additional for the mayor, a question concerned for me? We'll go ahead and adjourn the City Council meeting and move into our workshop session. We have a workshop session, as I mentioned earlier, is opportunity for, a learning opportunity for the council. And then we also have a short executive session that will need to discuss some personnel issues. So, and that is closed to everyone except the City Council and its staff. So thank you all very much.